Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pascal-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call?
Yes. Council members Blaisdell, Campos, Milne, Roach.
She is excused this evening.
Thank you. Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Brown.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. And would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone. With that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Any verbal reports from council members, any events or meetings that you may have attended and wish to share. Council member Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this last Wednesday, I did attend Tri-City's Area Parks Commission Annual Gathering. And at the Baker Ranch, we had a really good meeting. I was also there with Patrick Hicks, the park manager, and I got to hear their presentation by Director Rice. And what I really got out of it was Pasco doing the master plan as far as with the parks and with us having a completed master plan, it allowed us to go for RCO grants. So again, it was a very good meeting. Here are your presentation by Director Rice. It's kind of a sense of humor to him, which I just wanted to call that out because it was actually the most lively of any of the presentations, or at least I was enthralled with his humor spread out through the presentation. But I did want to answer another question. We had Mayor Protem Brown had asked about, a couple of weeks back, about the kid that came in and gave their presentation about different, having different equipment so that he could play, the kid that was in the wheelchair. And Kenwick, it looks like they're having what's called Cayson's Corner, and it'll be also in the playground at Dreams, but it's an area dedicated just to the kids so that they could be part of, they are other kids. And I thought it was a great idea, and I know Richland is doing a project as well, so I just wanted to give an update. And then they're also putting in a dog park. I thought that was kind of a cool thing as well. So, but yeah, looking forward to all the good things that are going on in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Does anyone else have anything to share? Council member Campos.
Madam Mayor, keep my comments brief. Participated in the Executive Committee for Ben Franklin Board of Directors. We essentially just set our agenda. Our agenda should be pretty interesting. We're going to discuss what our options for transportation at the Hanford site are, amongst some other things outside of that. That's it.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else?
Well, I definitely had a little bit of a busy week, starting with the Hanford tour. We had a council member, Mayor Protem Brown, and I participated in this year's Hanford tour. We were taken to the Hammer Training Site, my first time over there, Deputy Chief. That was very impressive. And actually, Chief Crowley, they actually had an ongoing training where we saw firefighters put out a fire, so we were able to see that live. So it was a long tour from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM in coordination with Tri-DIC. So it was, it was again, a great collaboration there. Then we did Coffee with a Cop over at Lifeline in East Pasco, another great event, well-attended. And several of the council members here participated, so thank you. Melissa, Councilwoman Blaisdell, Mayor Protem Brown, I need to get used to these new roles, new titles. And everyone else that participated, of course, thank you to the police department for putting it on. I closed my week, well, no, I did not actually. I did not close my week. So I did do, on Friday, I did participate, was invited again to be the keynote speaker for the Charter College commencement. So I was there sharing a little bit of experience and some wise words, I hope, to the graduating class. So again, congratulations graduating class for Charter College. Saturday, we did the celebration for the Mid-Columbia Libraries, their 50th anniversary. So we celebrated with them their 50 years in Pasco. And then, what was it, yesterday, we did the downtown walk, and we're going to hear from some of our partners regarding that today. But thank you staff and everyone, council members, that attended that walk. And there was a lot of community members out there, so looking forward to hearing some of that input. And again, thank you to chiefs, both chiefs, departments being out there, and again, for your input and your insight. Thank you staff for putting that together. And so, yes, it was a busy week and ready for another busy week. All right, and so, no other comments from anyone else?
Just real brief, yesterday, we attended the Pasco Chamber luncheon slash panel interview for most of us here on yesterday. It was interesting and fun. It's always new. Pasco always gives you something new and fresh. No matter where I go, it's something new and fresh. So yesterday was very interesting, and we got to spoke about a great city, so I was very intrigued by that. Wherever I'm able to share about Pasco being awesome and great, I always accept the invitation. So even though it was a panel interview, it was a good time on yesterday. So no meetings this week, so we look forward to my assignments on next week. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. And with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Items for discussion, item number five, A. We are going to get a presentation of the downtown master plan. Director Gonzalez, do you want to do the introductions?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. For several years now, we've been partnering with our consultant team Framework to first initiate and then develop the downtown Pasco master plan, along with implementing the downtown Pasco master plan. I'm excited this evening to introduce both Jeff Orango and Leslie Bain from Framework Consulting. We're here to present an update on several efforts associated with the strategies adopted in the downtown Pasco master plan. So, welcome.
Thank you. Your mic.
At the bottom.
There you go.
There you go, okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Jeff Orango with Framework, and thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening. We are going to focus our presentation tonight on our concepts for improving the code to allow more activation and use of the public space. We're calling this part of the Paint Pasco effort, and it's the Public Space Code. Is it possible to get the slides? Oh, there we go, sorry. There we go. So this was one of the key strategies that was laid out in the original master plan, and it's really based on the overarching goal of the master plan, which is bring more people and more activity to downtown. We had a fantastic walk with the community last night, and in addition to observing, you know, the lighting conditions, it was just great to have a lot of side conversations with a lot of folks. And I think universally, everyone kind of recognizes the issue of there needs to be more people and more activity downtown. Part of that is, you know, a bit of a chicken and the egg kind of thing, but we think some of these improvements to the code will really help to provide more opportunities for the community and business owners to have use of the public realm in order to create more activities and more things for people to do. So we want to ensure that downtown Pasco provides a fun, safe, and engaging experience for all, but we also want to provide clear and concise and user-friendly process for review. So even though we're writing regulations, we're doing this really to encourage people to use the new code and to take it upon themselves to create more activity in public spaces in downtown. And that's really the kind of overarching goal for this effort. Just a brief update on some of the work we've completed so far. So we updated the sign code to allow murals, which are now authorized in the city. There was some mural funding that was approved through the lodging and lodging tax that I believe will be coming to the council for final approval later in the fall. We've been working on a website that can be kind of the central online hub for communications around the downtown plan, so being able to update the community and receive feedback on some of the projects we're working on, on implementation is really important. We've been working on the design for a permanent street cafe, which would be authorized through the code proposal we'll be presenting tonight. We've been coordinating with the team that's been working on the Lewis Street Design Project and offering comments to them in coordination, and that's really looking really good, very consistent with the master plan concept. We've been working on the bike lane design on Clark Street, which is exciting, and we plan to roll that out here in the next couple of months. And then Leslie's been leading the lighting plan, which was the subject of the meeting last night, and she'll talk about a little bit right now.
Okay. Great. First, thanks to everybody that came on the walk with us. We were really, really pleased to have that many people there, and the discussions were great. So we heard a lot during the master plan that lighting was an issue, and safety, obviously, as a corollary of that. And I think one of the things that we learned last night is that lighting and activity really go together, that all the lighting in the world isn't going to necessarily mean that there's activities there, so we want to have those work hand-in-hand. There's really a handful of places that are open at night, but coming up here pretty soon, it's going to be dark even at the end of the business day. So it was great to have police and fire there and get their stories, so we're going to continue to work with them to find particularly the spots that are the most problematic and target those first. Alley's are one of those that I think were discussed last night as particularly problematic. We also want to find ways that maybe we can help the retail folks to light their merchandise, to light under the canopies, and to really highlight the beautiful shops that you have down here and maybe get more of them open. So these are just some pictures. We also had wheelchair users, so it's always good to get that perspective as well. Okay, next. Oh, we got this. Yeah, okay.
And just one other highlight, this is something we identified in the master plan and something we've sort of been working on. Beta testing is an easy and basically almost free way to collect parking data. And so we've been doing some GIS mapping to create a tool that can be used on a smartphone just to enter, you know, parking counts. And I think we've also been talking about perhaps using some drone imagery to do that, but finding a real cost-effective way that we can monitor parking. And if there's a parking problem, it'll show up from the data. So we're excited to kind of start rolling that out as well. Okay, so now let's get into the core of the presentation, which is the downtown public space code. So these are the topics that we're going to be dealing with. First is street and public use permits, and that would include what we're calling cafe seating and parklets. Also can be referred to as street cafes, and that is where businesses or restaurants would use a portion of the sidewalk for outdoor seating. In the cases where the sidewalks are not wide enough, we would allow for what's commonly referred to as a parklet, but it's the use of one or more parking spaces for outdoor seating for the business. And that's a great way really to activate the public space and provide more business opportunities and enliven the public realm. We're also looking to make updates to the mobile vending code. That's also kind of goes hand-in-hand with the business licenses. Those things are authorized in the code, but there are some serious barriers, and I think that's why you don't see as much of them as you might expect. And they tend to be in areas that are sort of isolated because of some of the limitations on the distances that those food trucks or carts can be to other uses, right? And so that really limits the opportunities to do that. We are going to be looking at events, but we're going to not include that in this first round of code updates, and the reason being that the city, you know, already has some very major events, and we want to take a little bit more time and do a little more due diligence with some of the stakeholders and folks that are involved in planning those events. But we do recognize that it is an issue that we want to address, and part of that is, again, powering other folks in the community and community groups, nonprofits, you know, other organizations to be able to hold events, so it's not, you know, just entirely on the city and its partners. But we will need a little bit more time to work through that. We will highlight a few issues later in the presentation. And then there's some things in zoning that we're doing to authorize food halls as a use, potentially allowing food truck cords, which are more permanent food truck installations, typically on a, you know, vacant parcel or a underused parking lot, which can be a great way to activate private and public space. We were looking at authorizing what we're calling a plaza frontage, where in certain locations in downtown, retail or restaurant businesses would step back from the public realm and create their own kind of outdoor cafe, kind of like we imagined in front of what will be Cafe Canarte in the parking lot space. So again, thinking about how we can really get the public realm and the private side really working together to activate the space. Apologize, there's some formatting issues that happened in the transfer of the slide deck, so apologies for that. Again, this is one of the renderings from the master plan. This is showing a parklet concept in front of PSK where the sidewalks are very narrow. There really isn't sufficient space to have outdoor seating. There's now three food windows. Of course, there is the park across the street, but it would be great to start to activate that side of the street. And again, we're working on kind of a more permanent concept that Leslie's going to be leading, that we hope to be able to roll out here pretty soon. So that'll be really exciting, and I think will really help the business at PSK. So just quickly, again, some of the definitions. When we refer to parklet, that's typically like a mini park that's accessible to anyone. It's not associated with a specific business. A street cafe is like you own a restaurant and you're requesting a street cafe that when the business is open, it's for that exclusive use of it. That does get into issues around fees and use of public space for private uses. I think the approach there is to take kind of a low barrier to entry approach initially, but if this becomes really successful and there are street cafes all over, there's a way to, you know, reap some benefits for the broader downtown because of that. But I think, you know, if you do that out of the gate, you're not likely to see a lot of that happening. So maybe you look at it as a pilot program initially, and then, you know, revisit it after that time in terms of what the fees and costs are with that. And then the sidewalk cafe is just, you know, simply using a portion of the sidewalk, much easier, and certainly, some streets don't have sidewalks that are wide enough to do So we copied some of the code in just as background, but, you know, some of these things, or many of these things are currently authorized, but there are some limitations, and we want to make it a little bit more user-friendly. So we want to add things like graphics that show how some of the standards apply, address any design standards, and create kind of a supplement guidebook that can be like a user guide for folks to use. We could even go as far as developing like pre-approved plans that private businesses could build, street cafes or parklets using those plans. And so that, you know, might be a potential next step that we look at. Again, going back to the sidewalk whis, this map looks at the different whis within downtown, and we've kind of set, at least initially, the width to have a street cafe using a parking space. You'd have to have sidewalks less than 12 feet. If your sidewalks are 12 feet, you know, you have enough for a row of seating along the frontage of your building, so. And, you know, long-term streets like Lewis Street will get even wider sidewalks, and, you know, then there'll be lots of, lots of opportunity for use of the sidewalks by the adjacent businesses. So again, this is just an example of a sidewalk cafe, and the rules continue to change and get easier around this. I think a lot of the first iterations required lots of big barriers, and a lot of that was related to alcohol service, and it had to be next to the building, and it couldn't be like on the other side of the sidewalk. But a lot of that has changed. Now you can use these like cafe markers you can see there in the photos, and we could design one of those that's specific to Pasco. And a lot of the rules around, again, alcohol services has lessened, but, you know, there are certainly rules that we want to abide by. One of the principles is you always want to be able to leave six feet of pedestrian clear space, so that's kind of a must-have. And in, you know, limitation, in situations where there is a conflict, you know, there might be, you might have to move a receptacle or something in those cases to make it work, but that absolutely has to be kept in place for accessibility. We're trying to think about ways to make the application process easier, so we would like to create some sort of online application. It could be linked on the project website, have some example site plans, really make it easy for people to apply and get approved as opposed to kind of figuring it out themselves. So we might have some example site plans, some photos, and make it really clear what people need to submit. There would be a requirement for just general like liability assurance, which I think most businesses would already have in place, but that's something you want to be mindful of, and we certainly want to check in with your city attorney before anything moves forward. Again, what I was saying earlier, I think, you know, a nominal fee to cover the cost of review so that, you know, the city isn't subsidizing it, but it doesn't become a barrier to entry. Again, if it's successful, then sure, there's a way to capitalize on that for the betterment of downtown. And then, again, using those cafe markers is a really nice, easy way to demarcate the space. So again, the street cafes would allow restaurant service. We have gone back and forth on this about whether to allow them to be out there year-round. You know, obviously, in a city with a real intense winter, you can do that. I guess our inclination is to allow them to be out year-round just because it makes it so much easier, both for the city, for the ones that you may implement, but also for the private businesses of having to take them out every year and dismantle them and then put them back. So maybe that's a conversation we need to have with Public Works as well, just to make sure, but that's kind of what's been in there now. Assuming it would be approved by the city, you know, allowing things like roofs and covers as possible, depending on the type, water misters, which can be great in the heat, heat lamps, which would be great in the cold, so allow some changing with the seasonality of it. And then implementing things like planters, movable seating, built-in seating, which can be a nice way to provide seating but also a barrier to the traffic, and lighting as well. And some of those lights could be provided using solar lights without having to string cords and stuff. So it's important to have certain buffers and spacing around a typical parking space. Included in our approach right now is to allow them in both parallel and angled parking spaces. So in front of PSK, it's an angled parking space. We could allow up to two parallel parking spaces and up to four angled parking spaces, and that's just because of the differences in width along the sidewalk frontage. We try to keep the length not to extend past the building, you know, so you're kind of keeping it within your building frontage. And then having buffers from the edge of the parking spot so that, you know, a car that's parking doesn't hit them, and, you know, you can use planters and other things to do it in ways that have really nice aesthetics. And then a buffer from the travel lane or bicycle lane in the case of that.
I was going to add one thing that, one of the reasons that it's really great to have good parking counts and parking information is that gives you some clues as to where it might be okay to have such a thing that, that you can, you can use a couple of parking spaces without causing problems for the businesses.
So fencing for the street cafes, we would require a 30-inch fence on all three sides, but not, obviously not adjacent to the sidewalk, and it would need to be 42 inches if alcohol is being served. So these are the types of diagrams that would go into the code, make it really easy, and people don't have to interpret it on their own. Street cafes and street grades, street cafes may be at the street grade with an AD compliant ramp, so rather than building it up to the curb, which is nice, if you design a ramp, you could still have it at the street level, and it would be accessible and much easier and cheaper to do. I mean, you could literally, you know, if you, if you are familiar with what the city did in Parking Day, right, they closed the street and put stuff out, kind of be the equivalent of that, but just in a few parking spaces. So the barrier to entry is not super high. Just some of the flow diagrams we might include in the code that talk about initial application design review, which, you know, is an internal thing within the city, but just again, depending on what is proposed in terms of, you know, materials and constructability, just making sure it's safe and, you know, hits all of the requirements. So these elements will be included in the draft code. We would like to have noticing requirements if a street cafe is proposing to take up more than two spots. Again, the two to four that we mentioned earlier, based on angled or parallel, is sort of a minimum in cases where a business might be doing well enough to support, you know, a larger area, and we do see that some of those in, in other cities, that there'd be a noticing requirement and let your, you know, fellow business owners or neighbors know about that so that they could offer some comment if they wanted to. The ability to offer pre-approved plans would be a great benefit. And then potential to collaborate with local makers and designers and fabricators is a pretty exciting opportunity, and maybe that's something we could even look at for the parklet at PSK, depending on how it gets designed. And then some cities require wheel stops and/or flexible bollards so that cars don't hit into them. We're sort of a little bit on the fence on that. We don't have that in the current proposal, but it certainly could be added, again, because it's another sort of logistical step that has to be done, and we think the risk is fairly minimal. But another way to use that would be to have some flexible bollards, removable planters as well. So another really important section is mobile vending. You know, PSK is really, I think, an incubator to try to support, you know, brick-and-mortar businesses, food trucks, things like that. And again, these things are authorized in the code, but there's a lot of barriers to actually seeing it happen. We should really look at these sort of food trucks and mobile vending really as an asset in downtown to bring more activity as opposed to like competition among different businesses, which we understand is somewhat a part of it, but really, you know, the more people we can get downtown really, I think, is going to benefit everyone, so we need to look at it, you know, a little bit differently than maybe it is in the code right now. So there's kind of three definitions in there. They talk about itinerant vendor, and then two classes of that are the mobile vendor and the stationary vendor. We want to update some of these definitions. We want to support more fixed locations in downtown, whether that's places like Peanuts Park at a regular time, or actually parking spaces in downtown that are designated for food trucks at certain times of the day, really easy for them to pull in and set up a shop. And then just reduce some of the restrictions and barriers to mobile vending, which are some of those distance requirements, like, for example, I mentioned putting a food truck in front of the new Cafe Canarte, that would not be permitted under the current code because of some of the distancing requirements to the public, public right-of-way. Okay, I think that's it on that. And again, just what I mentioned, the distance requirements, very onerous. There's a four-hour time limit, which we would recommend lifting. And then there's also some limitations of vending at night, which we think, again, if it's in a designated location, it's well-lit, it's safe, it's bringing activity to downtown, that should all be welcome and supported. So again, we would develop an easy, user-friendly application, developing an online application that also includes links on the website to state licensing requirements, you know, the county, if that's something relative to the health department. We could have, highlight a map that could show the locations, pre-approved locations where mobile vending could take place, whether those are in public or private spots, and then really simplify the application requirements and streamline the review process.
Right. That streamlining is not only helpful for the applicants, but also for staff.
There's some provisions in your code regarding commercial activity in the parks, and it generally talks about a concession contract, which certainly is a thing that parks do to provide food and services within parks, but there's also another approach, which is sort of just authorizing mobile vendors to operate in park spaces like Peanuts Park, which isn't really a concession contract, it's more like a business license and some sort of approval of the city to be able to do that. And I think, kind of thinking about opportunities within a multitude of parks would be a great way to activate not only downtown, but, you know, other locations in the city. And some of the code work that we're doing, again, would have broader impacts in the city than just in downtown. Again, events, not a focus of this round of the code updates, but there are a couple things we wanted to talk about. And again, it's about kind of removing unnecessary barriers where it makes sense. So we've looked at things like, when would we allow street closures to happen for events? Who would we authorize to do it? What would be the permit process? Temporary sales, the use of public parks, and then there's some provisions around public dance in the code that we want to highlight and have some recommendations on that as well.
I know you can't dance.
Yeah. So again, update the code for clarity, what types of events are allowed, who can do it, and when. Create some diagrams and information that can help with some of the requirements, like you have to have this... Like, you have to have this, it's a, a long acronym, but it's basically a traffic control plan, which could be challenging for some entities to be able to provide. So is there like an example we can provide or sample of traffic control plans that would really make it easy for these things to move forward? A temporary special event sales. Some cities will limit this to like just existing downtown businesses or to nonprofit organizations. So it's not like a for-profit entity having an event on one of your downtown streets. So I think kind of clarifying again, who, who is authorized to do it? And, and under what conditions would we want or encourage this to happen? And having the requirement of, you know, submitting all the vendors prior to the event and receiving a, a potential, before your permit is also a potential barrier since you may not have clarity on all of that at the time that you're applying. I think I covered this one, but it just, again, talks about the use of park property. And I think trying to, to open up opportunities to activate the parks would be a great strategy. This is the one that I mentioned earlier on public dance, and it talks about any public dance other than those conducted on the premise of a dance hall, and there's requirements. The last one requires a criminal history check in, in order to have a public dance. And we think that's something that could be rescinded. And then Leslie mentioned this earlier, we do have another slide on the lighting plan. But is there anything else you want to add on that?
Yeah, I think some of the things that we're, we're looking at in that is safety first. The aesthetics are important. We think that there's, you know, how do we make Pasco come to life, you know, at, at night? And, you know, with lighting, you can do so much, and you can see how that's changed the alley, you know, next to Chow. So I think there's a lot of things that we can do that can not only provide safety, but make downtown really attractive and look like there's things going on and attract more things to go on. So to get that virtuous cycle kick-started. There's also opportunities for wayfinding that I think, you know, we've, we've heard that that's, that's a plus too. So that's, that's a fun thing to do at night.
And that's the end of our presentation. Thank you, be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Patient, there's some questions coming up. Mayor Protam.
Yes, just pretty much comments. You've talked about the noticing requirements. Just for, for the clarification, is that notice thirty days, sixty day, ninety day? Is that, is that kind of where this is going?
Yeah, I don't know as we have settled on that, but it would probably be something like thirty days because the purpose would be to allow for an adjacent property owner to offer comment on the application, right? Like, oh, this would be problematic because, you know, we get a delivery or, you know, we're concerned about the number, you know, parking occupancy or whatever. So it's, it's, it probably would be, it would have to be a sufficient time for them to get the notice and have the opportunity to comment. So it'd probably be two weeks to thirty days, I would say.
Okay, and then my last, on the vendor application, rhetorical questions are safe to ask. The, the different languages that they would need to be in, has that been discussed? Or it's gonna be added to this presentation at some point?
Sure, absolutely. We, we did a lot of translated materials during the master plan, and absolutely, we can incorporate that onto the website as well and offer it in.
It'll be more attractive and more user-friendly if they can understand it and process it much easier. So, and then the barriers, I just, I kept hearing a lot of that. So are you, what you're working on is you're running into barriers based on our coding? Can you clarify that a little bit?
I think there's barriers to allowing some of the activities that we presented tonight. Like, mobile vending is allowed, but there are barriers to actually complying with the code that is preventing it from happening in, in, in some instances, not to say in all instances. But for example, like the, the taco buses, right? The, the, many of them are in sort of obscure locations in the back of a parking lot. And I think some of that is because of those requirements of proximity to other uses and distances. So again, they're allowed in some cases, but, you know, I think the, the example of the front area of Cafe Canarte is perfect because that's like tailor-made for a food truck, but would not be permitted under the current code.
No, that's, that's all I have, that's really good, that's good conversation, so we're on our way. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, sorry, not mayor, I was gonna say Mayor Protam, no, because I'm looking at this and it's confusing me. Councilman Milne, and then we'll come to Councilman Serrano.
Madam Mayor, do shit. Yeah, so I love the presentation, this is like quite a few years ago, but I'm glad we're there now, it's very important. So the council, you know, approves this, how long would it actually take staff and, I mean, to actually get this changed? Get all the codes changed? I mean, do you already have that done, or is that something?
We have, we have a draft code, probably within a matter of, you know, three weeks to a month, we could have this back in front of you.
Next spring, technically, if all goes well, we could actually.
Yeah, the, the idea is that it would be, be to launch and people would be ready, you know, when the warmer season happens. I mean, they could do it earlier, but, but yeah, we would have the code adopted, and then we have, just have to, you know, finish up some of the, like, application materials and things like that that we referenced.
Well, it's very exciting, I can't wait to see this, so thank you.
Ms. Serrano?
Thank you. This is more for staff. Please, if we're going to allow, and I like the concept of street cafes, we absolutely need to have a current inventory of parking spaces and ensure that we have an adequate buffer or stop so that we're not flooding, you know, the entirety of downtown where we have no parking. I, I know we've talked about, you know, what to do with the vacant Thunderbird Motel lot and opportunities for parking. But again, there's, there's, most of the land uses is consumed, and we're not gonna grow parking spots. So while it will be nice to have the opportunity for street cafes, I just want to make sure that we don't allow them too frequently and consume those valuable parking spots. And then, I know this sounds crazy, but I, I'm gonna look at Deputy Chief Cook. Are there, do you see, and I, I don't, I don't want to put you on the hook right now for Johnny-on-the-spot answer. With the itinerant kind of transitory vending, is there any risk of safety issues? You know, with the mobile vendors? And again, I don't necessarily need that, but I, I just question whether or not that provides potential cover space for specifically with drug, drug use and consumption and, you know, the Blake so-called fix that's ruined our state, drug possession and transactions. Is there any risk with some of the other vendors who may not, who, who aren't, are either temporarily stationary or mobile in their entirety? Again, I don't need an answer to that, but I think it's something that we should look at to our various populations as to how it could impact that, whether that provides a safety concern. I don't know if you followed that, it was a long-winded question, so.
I did follow it. I, I am not aware of any vendor issues that we've experienced for a long, long time.
And, and I don't anticipate seeing them, I just know, again, especially with relaxed drug possession and consumption laws in great part from our great city of Olympia. You know, I, I just, I, I have very highbrow concerns. And again, I don't foresee it being an issue, but I'm also not walking the streets, and I'm also not wearing a badge. If it's something that y'all had concerns about, I'd, I'd be supportive of hearing those, I guess is, is my plea. Thank you. Otherwise, I, I think it's great, I think it's opening downtown to transact business is a great thing.
For those comments, I just wanted to follow up and say I completely agree with you on the parking, and that's why we're trying to get a, a good set of parking data to have informed decisions, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just looking at your last slide here for your streets and sidewalk cafes and precedents, and you listed Seattle, City of Langley, and City of Minneapolis. Were these the only three cities that you looked at for, for comparisons or code provisions? Okay, just want to make sure, because, you know, those are varying demographics and size and feel. And, you know, a big thing for, for us, you know, we talk about Walla Walla being about probably as close of a neighbor as you can get, and they, they really seem to be doing their downtown a really good service. And so if we're not pulling from something that they're doing and trying to emulate, you know, the good things that they're doing down there, I know that they, there's a whole section of the street that they block off and do really good outdoor seating in the summertime. And they've got music and wine bars, and it's just a really great atmosphere. And so I'm, I'm glad to hear that those are not the only three, but again, it just, I want to make sure that in the process of developing this, we've at least considered some of those things, is all.
And, and we'll absolutely take a look at Walla Walla and make sure we incorporate that into it before we finalize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? I will add just a few comments here, and I agree with Councilman Campos. I actually visited a tiny little town, well, tiny in comparison to Pasco, Salem, Massachussetts. They were actually incorporating, I see your picture here for Minneapolis. They did take up, it was at least four parking spaces, street parking spaces, where there were the, the restaurant across, it was just across the sidewalk, and they were using up these, these four parking spaces between three restaurants. So it's not taking up a lot of other parking, and they're sharing that space for, you know, people to come in and out and move around, and it was, it looked clean. And that was just one of the cities that I recently visited. I did also visit San Francisco, not the same story. I, it's not advisable from what I saw. Highly, the traffic did not lend itself to street vending, parking, park lights, or, you know, the, the sidewalk cafe.
Yeah.
Style. It didn't fit there. Different demographics, I know. Overall, I want to say that this plan is looking closer to what we've been looking for. For some time, we've been talking about improving downtown. This is getting closer to what we've been asking. I know Councilman Milne has been pushing from the very beginning, more lighting, better lighting in downtown. And, you know, I'm glad he joined us for the walk last night to where we, we saw those, those contrasts, right? And so, you know, there's definitely some work to be done. There's definitely some, some improvements to our code that should be revised to allow this. I, I'm not opposed myself to using some of those parking spaces. Just gotta figure out a way that it'll benefit. How many restaurants do we have in downtown currently that will use that, right? And so I don't think it'll take too many spaces. But who knows, maybe that'll attract more, more restaurants to, you know, come over to downtown. So yeah, those are, those are my comments, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, thank you so much, Leslie, Jeff. It was great catching up with you last night.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you. And so with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, item B. Resolution Northwest Baseball Ventures I LLC Tri-City Dust Devil's lease renewal at Geesa Stadium. And then we have Director Rice.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you may recall, several weeks ago, actually back in August, I brought this resolution and draft lease to you to approve for renewing the current Tri-City's Dust Devil lease. During that meeting, some fiscal impact questions are asked about the value of the rent and how it relates to the cost of maintenance of the facility, as well as additional fiscal impact to the community. So myself and Director Buckley did a little bit of research, well, she did most of the research. I'm just on the presentation, so we keep the financial stuff with her for a reason. So, so I was here to revisit that tonight, re-present the data that we did identify, and again, ask for your approval of the lease and resolution to renew that. So some of those key terms we've already discussed, that this renews the existing lease with Northwest Baseball Ventures, which is the Tri-City's Dust Devil. Their current agreement expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, so we are getting down to the end of needing to renew it. It does add some contract language to meet the alignment with the Major League Baseball's requirements for licensing of the Tri-City's Dust Devils and really all of the minor league teams. It is for an initial term of ten years with one ten-year renewal option and includes an additional rental payment of thirty-five thousand dollars with annual increase over the life of the term. And one of the parts of that rental payment is we're also offering a rental credit for improvements that the Tri-City's Dust Devils do to the statement, much like you would a normal renter. They make improvements and we offset that value in the rent, so. So what we found is that researching with staff, that the annual rent covers the expenses related to the city management and maintenance of the facility. That includes the financial oversight of that, as well as our parks and rec, parks and facilities management, any parts supplies and, and labor hours they put towards that. Looking through an independent consultant who provided fiscal information, overall, between spending related to the Dust Devils team, tax revenue and creation of jobs, we turned out that there's twelve-point million, twelve-point-four million dollars of fiscal impact to our regional area, generating a tax revenue between city, county, and local taxes of seven-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand and an estimated creation of a hundred-and-eleven full-time equivalent jobs in the regional area. Additionally, the city is currently investing one-point-nine million dollars of our own funds in updating the stadium to meet minor league baseball requirements for both fan and team player experience. But we have received a no-match three-million-dollar state grant for additional stadium upgrades in fall twenty twenty-four, which are obviously exceeding our investment and improving our facility. So with that, I ask if, do you have any questions? Can we review any of the data? Or again, can I ask for your approval to move forward with the renewal of the lease and resolution to do so?
Thank you for that. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Councilman Serrano?
I'm, I'm absolutely supportive of this. I just want to address one element on this, page eleven, it's subsection seven, or VII, subsection three, or, excuse me, E, little dyslexia there, I guess. So it talks about offsetting improvement costs and if a certain threshold's met. And I, I know recently we've put a lot of money into improvements, and I don't know whether those would be contemplated in this. You know, obviously, the ones that we have underway would be outside of this additional improvements. But I guess it was news to me when we had to put so much money into improvements. I guess fundamentally is, are we at risk of losing a significant dollar value in the rental agreement with continued improvements being required to meet other MILB standards, MLB standards, or other upgrade requirements?
So, yeah, I guess there is language that addresses that, and I believe there's limitations of what that would be. But I believe that Mr. Ferguson could probably answer those a little bit better because he addressed the, the draft lease and, and this section in particular.
So this, this particular language was actually drafted by us because one of the things that we were concerned about is that going forward, if there were any further additional requirements based on the PDL rules, that we wanted to make sure that if the, if the baseball team had to do those, that we wanted to make sure the same, I guess, formula that we're using currently to basically split those, those improvements to, to be able to be in compliance with the MLB standards, we wanted to make sure that if that comes up in the future, that the same, essentially the same deal will apply. So we've run this by them, they haven't had any concerns with it, so, or the Dust Devils haven't. But as a reminder, everything in this lease is subject to Section B, that super powerful original provisions that, that really makes MLB be able to amend this contract unilaterally. So just, so we're all remembering that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, I'm not super concerned, it's just, you know, our dollar value is thirty-five to thirty-nine thousand dollars, and if there's a potential credit of a quarter of that, up to ten thousand dollars, that's a quarter of the revenue lost. Now, if we flip back a slide, you'll, as noted, you know, spending of twelve-point-four million dollars and tax revenue of nearly eight-hundred K and a hundred-and-eleven FTE, equip, FTEs. So I realize that the dollar value of this lease is not this lease itself. I just want to make sure that, as we're discussing this publicly, that, you know, it's, it's, if someone were to read this, it's, you're giving away a quarter of your value. But again, the real value is the spending impact, the entertainment value, and something special for Pasco, right? You know, the other two cities have their own entities, and we have the Dust Devil. So again, I just wanted to call attention to that, make sure that we weren't at risk, so I appreciate that.
Councilman Campos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Was gonna let this slide, I feel like this is such a no-brainer, just a great thing to have in our. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Was gonna let this slide, I feel like this is such a no-brainer, just a great thing to have in our community, but I wanted to kinda. Touch off Councilman Serrano's comments. One of the uh, the new Hapo um, operators touched on the fact that. You know, a big city like Boise doesn't support their baseball team and they lost it. And it's just really cool to see the Tri-City Dust Devils thrive in this market. You know, Yakima, the, the, they had the Bears, now they're the uh, Pippins, I believe. And uh, same thing, you know, we, we seem to be doing the right thing, and I'd like us to continue to support the Tri-City Dust Devils and their efforts in the community.
Perfect, thank you for sharing. Any other comments? Hearing no other comments, we look forward to seeing that in our next meeting, maybe? Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, um. Item C, Resolution Change Order Number Four for the East U G A Expansion Sewer LID Phase Two Project, uh, Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, I saw you look in the audience. Uh, tonight, we're gonna share with you, oh, not that slideshow, we're not ready for that one yet. So, uh, we don't necessarily have a map for this one, but if I could get you oriented, if you were to take Burns Road. All the way to the east, across the fields on, above the airport, until you hit Glade Road. And then right there in the northeast corner of that intersection is where we're talking about a new lift station for the East U G A Sewer L I D. And so, this particular item on tonight's agenda is to talk about a change order that we are uh, looking to get council approval on. First off, you may recall that this sewer L I D project was divided up into four phases. All four phases have been brought to council for uh, award, they've been bid. And um, most of them are under construction right now, and uh, some of them are just getting materials ordered and delivered. Uh, phase two is the one that is running the gravity line up Glade Road towards. And to the Dairy Gold Site, okay? Phase three is the one that has the lift station that connects at the bottom of this particular gravity main. During the design of the project, we determined after uh, designing a portion of the lift station, that the best location for this, the lift station is on. A ver- the very corner of Lamb Weston's property. They've got a circle right there, and the corner of it is unused, and so we've been in negotiations with Lamb Weston. And they've been great to work with. Uh, we have not completed the negotiations, but they have given us what we call possession and use of the property. Which allows us to go ahead and move forward with the construction of phase two and phase three of this project. So we very much appreciate that. And so, as part of our agreement with Lamb Weston. We agreed to ensure that we provide them two connection points for future connection of their building to this sewer line. I don't know that they're gonna do it right away, it'll be in the future, so that was not included as part of the bid. So we're needing to do that as a change order now. And so, um, and that particular road is a very busy road, especially right there in front of Lamb Weston. And so we're looking at a directional bore in two locations underneath the road. We did compare the cost to uh, digging trenches across the road. But once you add in the additional traffic control necessary to keep the truck traffic moving. The cost was pretty much close enough that we decided that boring would be the least amount of impact to the truck traffic to Lamb Weston. So, um, in terms of the contract for phase two, this looks like a very large change order, percentage-wise. But phase two is like the smallest of all four phases in terms of contract uh, price. But it's three point nine percent of the total L I D sewer project cost. So it's within what we would typically consider to be uh, the realm of change order costs. So, um, with that, uh, Deputy Mayor, or Deputy Director Sarah's here to answer all your difficult questions.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions, comments, concerns, suggestions? Councilman Serrano?
So, just to make sure I understood, cause you know, I saw the change order for the two laterals is four hundred eighty K. What you just explained is the basis for that being a reasonable cost, that is, that had you gone laterally. With all the other mitigation that was required, it fundamentally would have aggregated to a near amount.
And would have had more of an impact than doing the borers.
Okay. That's, like I said, it's the one thing I circled, I was like, man, a half a million dollars on two, and. I don't own a drill, I mean, I got a regular drill, but you know, I don't like going to the wall, so. So I didn't know what the real cost was, I appreciate that background.
You bet.
Any other comments? Hearing none, uh, I guess we'll look forward to seeing that in our next packet. Thank you. Um, moving on to our next item on the agenda, ordinance amending P M C sections. Three point three five point one six zero and thirteen point four five point zero six zero. To am- amend water rights acquisition fee. Again, Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This one's gonna be a fun one. So, uh, we've got a PowerPoint presentation for this one tonight, uh, if we can go to the first slide. Um, I wanna explain a little bit, give you a little bit of background on the water rights in Pasco. Uh, and most of the cities in our area are the same way. We get our potable water, which is what we call drinking water. Uh, the source of our water is from the Columbia River. And in order to get water out of the river, we have to have the right to be able to do it, and it's called a water right. We get the inform- or the certificate from the Department of Ecology in order to give us the right to pull water out of the river. And they tell us how much we can pull each year. We have available to the city, uh, as you can see, eighteen thousand eight hundred eighty-three acre feet of water per year. Now, acre feet is a volume that we use. It's equivalent to one acre of land, one foot deep in water. And um, I think I've got a, a slide in here that shows how many gallons that is. Um, we al- also have leased water. Uh, which means we pay annually for ten thousand acre feet per year from the Department of Ecology. And that water costs us thirty-five dollars an acre foot, and so for ten thousand acre feet, that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that we pay. Our usage in twenty twenty-two was only fifteen thousand eight hundred seventy-three. Um, prior to us receiving the ecology leased water, we were underwater in our water rights. Pun intended. So, anyway. Stupid engineer jokes. Uh, next slide, please. So, in our uh, Pasco municipal code, there are three sections that talk about how we deal with water rights related to new developments. The first one is shown there in the P M C thirteen forty-five, talks about extending water beyond the city limits. And then again, in our subdivision regulations in P M C twenty-one oh five, it talks about the assignment of water rights for subdivision of land. So when they do residential subdivisions, then they are required to give the city enough water rights to serve the development. And then the code goes on to say that the city has the right to be able to buy any leftover water right that's available at current market rates. So it's our way to try to continue to build our water rights portfolio so we can continue to serve the public. So, the third uh, area of the code that is referenced is actually the fee schedule. And so, P M C three point three five, Revenue and Finance, there are uh, two different citations relative to water. One is uh, the in-lu fee for irrigation and potable water. So currently, our fee right now is seventeen hundred and twenty-five dollars per acre foot. So if a development does not have water rights to give to the city. Per that previous code we just looked at, then they pay the city seventeen hundred and twenty-five dollars per acre foot of water that they need from us. The idea behind that is, we then collect that money, and then as we build the money up, we then go out and buy. More water rights from other people and keep the process going so that the city continues to have water rights to serve new development. And then, uh, irrigation water is treated differently in the code in terms of how much. Water gets uh, dedicated to the city and how much potable water gets uh, dedicated to the city. Two different ways of measuring the amount that gets used for development. And then there's also in the fee schedule, a transfer fee, cause there's paperwork that we have to do. To submit to Ecology to transfer from what used to be farmer groundwater irrigation rights to city rights. So we charge that as well. Next slide, please. So, the question is, what's missing in all of this? Well, um. Irrigation and water rights transfers for commercial developments are missing. Right now, the transfer requirement is only for residential subdivisions. We have some very large commercial developments that use a lot of water. A lot of potable water is used for irrigation, depending on where in the city you are. And so we have large industrial users like food processors that. Were not required to give us their water rights, but they recognized that we couldn't serve them without it. So we'd like to address that in an update to the Pasco Municipal Code. We also have schools that are not residential developments, but they tend to use a lot of water, especially when they're irrigating their site. And they use water. So, right now, school sites are not required to give those water rights to us either. Um, and so, uh, the water usage right now is currently based on. The water line extension, or excuse me, right now, the code says that people outside the city pay for extending the water line beyond the city. We think a better y- is, a better measure of that is the water usage. How much water are you using, not whether or not we have to extend a pipe out to you. And we had a rate study done by a local economist. And he went out and looked at different market rates for water rights that were sold, and current market rate is forty, four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per acre foot. Now, I say that, and I can tell you, I also received earlier this year, a marketing brochure. For the purchase of water rights for seventy-five hundred dollars an acre foot. Now remember, our code says seventeen hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the market rate right now is forty-one fifty. Next slide, please. So what we're starting to see is developers appear to prefer paying our current in-lu fee. Because it's less. They can, um, if they have existing water rights on the land that they're developing. They'd rather pay our seventeen hundred and twenty-five per acre foot in-lu fee and then go. And sell or transfer their water rights to another property or sell it to someone else for forty-one fifty. And they come out ahead. Unfortunately, Pasco does not come out ahead. And it's, it makes it difficult for us to continue to buy water rights when we don't receive enough revenue. And somebody else is buying up all those water rights at a higher cost. Next slide, please. So, um, we are also seeing that um, water rights are being leased. And so we went out with a, an R F P, a request for proposal, to try to see if there were people out there. That would be willing to sell the city or lease the city water rights instead of us purchasing it outright. And we, we found some folks that have water rights, they don't wanna sell them, but they are interested in leasing those water rights to us. We would pay three hundred and ten dollars per acre foot per year. Now compare that to the thirty-five dollars we're paying Ecology. Per acre foot per year. So almost ten times more to lease water rights now than what we pay Ecology. And that is with no escalators per year, and that's equivalent to a forty-one hundred and fifty dollar acre per foot capital cost. Twenty-year term, we had three respondents to the R F P. We have available to us to lease four thousand acre feet of water if we want to. But the annual payment for that four thousand acre feet would be one point two four million dollars per year. And at the end of twenty years, we still don't own the water right. That doesn't seem prudent. Next slide, please. Therefore, we are suggesting of making some changes within the Pasco Municipal Code. We would like to change uh, the uh, the event that causes the use of transfer of water rights from a water line extension. To actual water usage. Anybody who needs to use city water should be required to transfer water rights from their property to the city. So that we can provide them water with their water rights. We also want to include any development within the city. Cause right now, the way the code reads, only developments beyond the city are required to do it, except for residential developments. And we would like to consider that the fee schedule for water rights be. Or include not only market rate, but a fifty percent surcharge. Now that fifty percent is just an arbitrary number, we can decide to choose whatever number we would like, but I put that in there just as an example. But the idea there is discourage people from selling the water right to other people. We'd rather have them transfer the water right to the city. Or they pay a higher in-lu fee. Cause we really would like the water right instead of the in-lu fee. It is not easy, even if I had money, it's difficult to find enough water rights at a good price for the city to have. And to hold forever. So, um, and that surcharge also accounts for the fact that the value of those water rights may increase in the future. So even though somebody may pay the in-lu fee now. We may not have enough money saved up for several years, and then the pr- value of that water right goes up in several years. And that surcharge helps us build that money up so we can still pay for it. Next slide, please. So that's kind of a very quick overview of where the city currently sits with their water rights fee. And we're interested in hearing from council as to whether or not you think the proposed changes to. The P M C related to water rights acquisition is a good idea or a bad idea? And so we're open to answering any questions you may have.
Um, I saw Councilman Campos's light come on first, and then I'll turn over to Mayor Protemper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will open with this. I think, uh. Fundamentally, this water rights thing just blows my mind, you know, the FCC's put out a government mandate that. Sell services free, but yet we have to purchase water rights, so just fundamentally, uh, my mind's boggled. That's just me, but. I will say this, you know, here lately, city staff, you've been heavily critiqued by uh, the community. Obviously during election season, you know, your efforts have kinda been attacked, uh, from. Majority of the public, people who are running, and Adam Lincoln, I just wanna thank you and your staff. This is the type of innovation. I don't think this came from any one of us to direct you to look at the code, look at the P M C to try to do a revision on this, and. Um, I just, I can't thank you guys enough for, again, you know, we've led the way on a lot of different things. Pasco, we've got awards in the back. You guys are doing the right things, and we're just here for the ride, it feels like for a lot of times. We don't have to give a lot of direction because you guys are professionals. You do your job to the best of your ability, and I think we collaborate really well. With that said. Yeah, well, why not, let's come out ahead on this.
Thank you. Mayor Protemper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, I'm gonna echo today. Uh, good job there, buddy. Um, for the staff, I think, awesome work. Um, we don't talk enough about. How well you all are doing just as a collective. Um, but this is, this is really good, but it's mind-boggling. So, Director Worley, whenever you set up the classes for water right acquisition time, um. Mayor Protemper will be there first, cause this was a lot. If you can notice, all those question marks are black except one. That's confusion to me. So, I'll be glad to sit and talk with you and get more information, more feedback about it, to be able to partake in this, in its fullness, because it is a lot, and we want to make sure we're making sound decisions for the city of Pasco to, to grow many years beyond a servant hood. So I appreciate it, and will give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Serrano.
Thanks. I know I've spoken a lot, so I'll try to keep it quick. In looking at the markup, I, I struggle with the fifty percent markup rate, just personally. You know, we, we are a city, now we do have our needs, we have future needs, we have present needs. I think fifty percent is a little exorbitant from a government, you know, local municipality, so I struggle with that. I don't know what the specific right number is. I do think one way we want to ma- we may want to capture this is rather than setting just a hard value at, what was it, sixty-two, tw- sixty-two twenty, sixty-two twenty-five, and eighteen sixty-seven point fifty, which again, represent the fifty percent. I think what we may want to do is a market rate. Like, we set it presently at whatever we decide on, that if it's one and a quarter, and that turns out to be fifty-one hundred, we say fifty-one hundred or a hundred and twenty-five percent of market rate, and then going value. It may allow for fluctuations, it may get a little messy, because there may be folks who buy in a down year, or, or need to transfer rights in a down year, and, and they benefit from that. But I also don't think that if it, not that I think it's going back down to seventeen hundred, but if it were to go back down, that I think it'd be tough to sell our code as fair, when it's, you know, five hundred percent. So, again, I think some way to show the fluctuation in the market to capture the, you know, X percentage of a markup on then-market value, I think, might have benefit. So it doesn't look like we're just trying to bring extra money in. And again, I, I appreciate this. Water rights are extremely difficult, they're not easy to come by. We've been very, very blessed as a city to have a good relationship with ecology, with other folks who are willing to transfer and sell us at market or below even at times, it seems. So, thank you for your work on this, but I just, I, I struggle with trying to, it, it looks like we're pulling cash, and, and whether we are or aren't, and whether it's rightful to do so with certain industries, is, is another separate question, but I, I struggle with the fifty percent markup.
Any other comments? Uh, Councilman Mill?
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with the fifty percent, although that was kind of, but I know you said it was just a number, you were just throwing out a number. I would, since you're asking for our opinion, I would say, let's move forward on this. We, you know, do trust the staff to come up with a good number, a fair number, but that's not, not an exorbitant number. But I do realize that we do need water rights, we do need to stay ahead of the curve, and I'm glad that you brought this up, and I'm glad that we're staying on top of this, so thank you.
Any other comments?
Director Worley, thank you so much for bringing this, uh, uh, forward. Again, to echo, Councilman Compos and Mayor Prottemper Brown, you want to go beyond to look into this particular change. I do want to echo that I struggle with the fifty percent, but again, clarification, you said it could be, you know, a different number. And so, even if it's fifty percent, I, I'm, I agree that we should move forward. I, you know, going with the word here, mind-boggling that we're using now. Selling water rights to someone outside of city limits. I, I can't even grasp that, and so, thank you for bringing this forward. I, I fully support this, and so I do look forward to seeing this in our next packet. Are there any other comments from councilmembers? Thank you again, Director Worley, so we'll see this soon. And with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Ordinance Amendment to Pasco Municipal Code, Section ten point three five point zero one zero, to include Burns Road speed limit change. And again, Director Worley.
Thank you.
I like that, I like that title, the speed limit change.
It has been brought to the city's attention by certain individuals that live out in the Burns Road area, that the speed limit on Burns Road might be a little high for the current developments that are going on out there. So based on that, we hired a very experienced traffic engineer to do what is called a speed study. And, they look at the current speed, and they look at the surrounding area, they look at the road conditions, they look at the developments, and after a thorough evaluation, the traffic engineer recommended that the speed on Burns Road west of Broadmoor be dropped from fifty miles an hour to thirty-five, which matches a lot of the other roads around that area. Now, it's fifty now, I think, because that area was county, it's been annexed. We have been in touch with the county as well, and they're willing to extend that speed limit all the way to the west, as far as it goes, along with that portion that's in the city. And so, that is staff's recommendation, in an effort to keep things safe based on the developments that are going on out in that area, that we change the municipal code to drop that road from fifty to thirty-five. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments? Councilman Serrano, and then I'll ask my question.
Is the intent to do this immediately? I mean, I mean, there's building that's ongoing, so there's more traffic now, but it's certainly not inhabited to the level where the safety concerns may not be as fully present. I'm not saying that that's not the case. I just, I know that there are already people who are upset that so much building's going on down there, and, you know, then to drop their speed limit by fifteen miles an hour, especially where they get a ticket, they might not be thrilled. So, I guess the question again, is this the intent, just bring this back and it's done?
There are ways that we are required by the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD, that we all follow, to make sure we're doing all of our traffic control correctly. There are indications that we are, that we will provide, indicating to the public that there has been a traffic revision, even for a speed limit change. So it'll be obvious, we put flags on the signs, we give advanced notice, all that kind of stuff. And then, I want to go back and correct something. According to the RCWs, these go into effect no sooner than five days after approved by the legislative authority, so not quite immediately, but close. And, yes, if, if it's council's desire, we can certainly bring this back next week, and the code would change, and then we would, five days later, go out and install the necessary signs to let folks know that the speed limit changed.
Okay. I guess from my position, I think we should make sure there's adequate public notice to those folks down there. We're admit- admittedly on a selfish perspective, I know I'm going to get phone calls, because that's in my district now. So, you know, if we can at least give notice, and, and that building is blown up, I mean, there's a lot going on out there, there's no question. I'm not a traffic consultant, I would prefer to see forty miles an hour, but again, I'm not a professional, and I'm just a legislative person, so my preference would be to drop it to forty instead of all the way down to thirty-five. So that's my take there, but please, if we are going to move forward with this, I guess as a plea to this body and that body, let's make sure it's well noticed.
Go all the way down to the river where that corner turns, so that would also be at thirty-five?
All, all the way down to, what's the road along the river? I forget the name of it. It's the one that's going to get realigned. Shoreline Road.
Okay, so go Shoreline to Burns?
It would be just Burns from Broadmoor to Shoreline, so.
My question, that, that corner where it turns into Burns, does that get affected as well?
Where it turns into Burns?
Yeah, along the river.
Oh, so from Shoreline Road onto Burns Road, there would probably be a sign right there for Burns Road.
Okay.
I know it's a little challenging, but there's a map, I'm not sure if you got a packet. There should be a map in your packet where it shows the section. If that helps.
Yeah.
Any further clarifications, comments, questions? Quick question. I, I, it is a little bit of a walk to the schools. Are we seeing any students on a bike maybe, riding that way?
I have not seen any. I have a feeling that as more development occurs and the pedestrian facilities become more prevalent on both sides of Burns, we may see an increase in pedestrian activity, especially if the speeds limits slow down.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other comments from anyone else?
I, I agree with Councilman Serrano, just making sure that we are putting up enough notification to the residents, to the users. And, after that, I say we move forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we're almost done. Item six, miscellaneous council discussion. Are there any discussions? City Manager Lincoln.
Mayor and council, we've got, I think, three, so I'll start with Director Worley. We'll start with Director Rice.
Entering the conversation. So two updates for you this week. First, we have our Fall Festival, that actually starts on Thursday, October 12th, with a special premiere out at Fairchild Cinemas of the Monster House movie, which starts every ten minutes between the hours of six and seven o'clock. That is a free event, and also includes a free small popcorn. So, great way to start off Fall Festival, and we thank Fairchild Cinemas for partnering with us on that. And then, of course, the primary event for the Fall Festival is this Saturday, October 14th, in Volunteer Park, one to four PM, where we're expecting about, a crowd of about two thousand kids is our anticipated attendance. We'll have games, prizes, candy, face painting, inflatables. Several vendors will be out offering interactive games and providing candy to the kids. And again, we thank GISA Credit Union for partnering with us on that. And then, a reminder, Pasco Farmer's Market's still going strong. We have three remaining Saturdays left to go, so I encourage everyone to come out, enjoy the final fall products that are available. We still have entertainment planned every weekend, and look forward to seeing you out there. Thank you.
Just has a couple items.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Wanted to provide counsel with some of the permitting activity that the city staff, well, really the city's experiencing. And, in general, the, the growth in the industrial sector is strong. Commercial permits have showed a slight decrease compared to the previous year, and residential accessory structures remain extremely popular, in particular with commercial permits. We did see a slight decrease this time, compared to this time last year. But however you to date, the permit valuations remain fairly strong. On the industrial side, we're continuing to experience and see quite a bit of interest and activity. And, year-to-date, construction permits and valuations have reached quite a high total, surpassing the previous year's total by a significant margin. So, I think quarterly, what the Department for CED will do is provide counsel and, and our staff with quarterly updates about permitting activity as the city continues to grow, that'll become a really important aspect of our finances, et cetera. Also wanted to talk, really summarize the great event last night, the Downtown Walk Audit. We had nearly forty people attending. That was well-covered in the presentation by our Downtown Consulting Group. I also wanted to mention that this is the second walk audit that staff has conducted over the previous couple of months. We did hold a walking audit during the lunch hour on the Sylvester Street corridor, next to Stevens Middle School and Court Street, to see how that area functions during the middle of the day. We do have plans to initiate walking audits across other areas of the city, along Argent, Road 68, Burden, East Pasco, et cetera, to make sure that we're continuing to identify and evaluate potential solutions to mobility and just general functionality of, of the entire city. So, wanted to share that with council, and happy to answer any questions I can. Thank you.
Following up with the other walk audits. Sorry, needed to interrupt real quick.
I just wanted to let council know that last week, several of us were at the Fall APWA, which is the American Public Works Association Fall Conference in Wenatchee last week, and I wanted to give a shout out to Deputy Director Maria Sarah, who was a co-presenter at the, at the conference, and her and our consultant who designed the wastewater treatment plan did a presentation on navigating Pasco's critical wastewater treatment plan improvements through collaboration. And both Deputy Director Sarah and Craig Anderson of Consor, who is our design consultant and our project manager, did an incredible job explaining how Pasco was able to get through the design so efficiently and effectively, that the project was able to meet the timeline to successfully receive twenty-one and a half million dollars in ecology low-interest loans. It was a very short time period in which to get the design and the construction drawings prepared, and they were able to do it through a very collaborative effort amongst the operations staff and the engineering staff. And, they really made Pasco look good, so I'm very proud of that. And then, in the next two days, there will be a Northwest Bioenergy Summit being presented at the Convention Center. This is, this summit will bring together diverse public and private interests for a comprehensive overview of the opportunities and challenges facing bioenergy development in the region. And, I have been asked to give a presentation on our process water reuse facility and the new treatment process that we're doing there, and the renewable natural gas that's being created. So they are looking for biogas case studies from industrial and municipal folks, and so I'll be doing the municipal part, and I hope to impress some federal and state agencies to give the project more money. So, just wanted to let you know.
I think that's everything, but just wanted to say thank you for the, the comments. I, I think that the, the staff are, are really trying to be innovative where we can be and, and take on new things, and I know it, it feels a lot of times like it's at the speed of government, which is not a, a nice thing to, to hear, but we, we do take the, the feedback seriously. The, the presentation at the beginning of the, the meeting, I think, is a great example of trying to, to really get out there and, and make improvements to an area of town that, that council, in, in my brief time with the city, has really hit home with staff, that that's a, a critical area. So, we appreciate the acknowledgement, and we'll keep doing good work for you.
Yeah, on that note, again, Director Gonzalez, as you mentioned about your, your walking audits, that seems to be something new, and, and it looks as if you're looking for process improvements. And I just want to commend you, and I want to encourage you to continue to do so. Again, it seems your department has really been kind of on the brunt side of a lot of the public comments, and, and I know that you and your new position, you've been doing a lot, and I have faith in your ability to continue to look for those process improvements. So just, you've got my encouragement, and Adam Lincoln, you, you've got my support as well. One thing on that note, as far as the walking audits, I would also encourage you, I've got a lot of comments. I, I work with a lot of people that reside out in Pete's District. Sanford Parkway and Convention Drive, I guess there was some construction here a few months ago, and they put up like a temporary stop sign, and the residents of that community commented on how much they appreciate it, and they thought it was going to be a permanent fix, and they were disappointed to see it go. So, I'm, you know, just kind of, we're talking about it, that's one specific area, and I think that we want to probably be holistic as a good use of our time, but that's just an example of, of maybe something that we could look at in the future. Outside of that, I, I don't have much. Again, I just encourage you, Adam, and, and your department, to continue to look for those process improvements, and as always, you've got my support.
Thank you, Councilman Compos, for your comments. Mayor Prottemper Brown.
Just a quick comment, I just further encourage you all to share the great things that are happening with Pasco. A lot of calls, phone calls over the last week, as how come you guys don't talk about the great things you are doing? The great things that are happening with Pasco, um, a lot of calls, phone calls over the last week is, how come you guys don't talk about the great things you are doing? I think we do, but maybe not as much, so I'm gonna share that I would like to hear more, cause this is how you end the meeting, I feel great right now. About the things that are happening and the innovative conversations that we're having about our city. Um, deemed as Pasco, so closing a meeting like this is the best way to end the meeting and then, then start conversations tomorrow. Cause you all know they call us after the meetings and, and email us, so I want to give them some good to go with. So I just want to encourage you to keep sharing as such tonight, because it's helpful to us as well when we talk to our constituents, so thank you.
Any other comments from council members? So no other comments, but again, heading on a high note, high note, uh, thank you, everyone, all staff. Uh, I think we do, uh, we do have a great team, um, Adam, thank you again for allowing your, your staff. Uh, the liberty to continue improving processes, uh, as we can see definitely with the presentation that we had today. Um, and with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, executive session, guess what? We do not have a need for executive session, and so with that, it is eight thirty-two and this meeting is officially adjourned. Have a great night, everyone, thank you, everyone, everyone for coming in person and everyone watching this, um, meeting tonight.